Any public discussion over any item on there can get it. Minutes.
Back to two pages, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
I know. It's all those DMOs. I know, poor Kyle. Now he'll be making sure for his...
He didn't bring many today, though.
No, I don't think so.
All the way to college school. You have this all in favor?
Aye, aye.
DMO works for a thing.
That's what he said. Thank you.
I'm starting my son on that deal. I'm paying him now.
Jay, don't forget textual correction nine o'clock on Wednesday.
Yeah, remember it. I will get them.
You guys don't forget, and please come invite your crews to the eleven to one. And Thursday is on December 8th. Kyle, we have two young men that are coming, so could you please come eat with us?
Two young men? Two young men?
Earl, Rick, and Louis.
Young men.
We have not ever given them their plaques, so...
What day is that?
Thursday.
Well, that's what's there. They're getting their plaques that day.
Yeah.
You can have Tuesday's.
Yes, please, come with two of them, anyway. Come hungry, there's lots of food always.
So is the car here that's good for ladies and boys?
Thursday, Thursday at lunch. Wednesday morning is our textual correction.
That was because your turkey must be bad out of town.
Our two exercise board members that have retired, I have never given them their plaques.
How many guys have got...
Last January, they're gonna be there.
When did you say it was?
Wednesday, oh, Thursday, eleven to one.
Let me get one of my guys.
Out of the playgrounds.
Thank you.
I guess you can say more. Whatever, because one of them, one of them did everything. Did paper, hadn't done nothing.
Did you say eleven to one?
Eleven to one.
We're just closing eleven to one, I mean, I think we'll probably start eating about, try to start eating about eleven thirty, tell them we have to do for sure, set up.
You got anybody, Jay, that has a chemical license for spraying?
No, not at this time. I mean, Michael could renew his, because he had his commercial when he worked for, to go and go off. He could probably renew his pretty easy, but we don't have anything in the way of sprayers or anything that, at this point.
That sounds like running. Running, running gets so much, so...
At the same time on the horn.
Yeah.
I'm thinking steel surround. Sons.
Yeah. Guard rail. Just like that.
They just can't seem to go around.
Your job's trying to take back up in that corner.
Yep, one of them, then they have them up the next one.
Yep, yep, that kind of way, we got same deal.
My guys, I got guys...
What's that saying?
I got guys that don't like weed, so they see how close they can get.
Yeah.
I had, we took down the city at Carterman side.
Ooh.
That took some negotiation.
Well, well, at least, you got that last one.
That one, they put up, that was the new one.
Oh.
Yeah. The other one wasn't that good. They're no match for that whore.
Look at you being a nice guy, helping put a new sign in.
Oh, that was one of them days.
Payrolls, leave that Thursday before your parents, before you guys leave.
Do what?
Payroll Thursday before you guys leave. And they won't get paid the Wednesday before.
Yeah, she reminded everything, everybody up there this morning, that we got that safety meeting Wednesday, and said, one of them said, "I got one day to take off, I want to take off Thursday," she said, "That payroll day." Well, yes, we won't take off Thursday then.
We're not saying that you're trying to get all the vacation days and stuff done before the anniversary date, but all my girls' anniversary dates are right there at the beginning of the year. You guys, we've known about this all year, but...
We're finally getting rid of these deals for Lockenfield.
Yeah.
This ought to be it. She asked me if I wanted to, I had my invoice, I said, "I'd love to have it, but don't go ahead, because you won't get it."
Yeah, I left a message with Jessica, but I didn't get to talk to her. I don't know if they got paid, they not open until nine, it was before nine when I called and I sent a message, but I'll call again. And she's been very good about getting this work. Did you listen, did you go down, Jake, did you go down to Echo?
No.
Cindy Bird was there, her big thing was communication and officer meetings and, she spent the first thirty minutes of her speech telling them what each officer's job was, and I was like, "You're sitting here with a room full of officers, we know what our jobs are." Communication, communication, communication. She barely touched on the homegirl.
Oh, yeah.
But I mean, her whole point was that we need to communicate to our patrons, so they know, you know...
If I'd have gone, I'd have gone to Wednesday, I didn't like anything on Thursday.
I didn't go, I didn't go Thursday, I just went to Wednesday.
You were wasting your time, I mean.
I didn't go to anything on Thursday, I didn't stay all night or anything, I just drove down there Wednesday morning, I went to Wednesday.
I think you drive down there that morning, that Uber.
Yeah, I haven't had time to.
Well, on Tuesday, they called about Kingston, I thought, well, I'm not gonna get down there, if I get down there, I'll get another phone call.
There's in that grant, that's on me. On Enbry, it looks out of the nine one one. It was in that slip I printed out. This was in my...
The chief from the church.
Well, it doesn't say resolution, it just says like a couple four points. About, you know, of course, everything else, and anyway, how much the...
It messes up.
Tribes help the counties, and how much the counties help the tribes, but... This is very interesting.
Dad gave me, made her, she got me, I did that part.
I don't think so, I don't know if I ever emailed, it was on my website.
Good gosh.
Yeah, yeah, did take a deep breath on that. It must be his bonus for Christmas.
Makes you feel better, I don't need bills, so...
Holy smokes. Do we need to take the whole paper this time?
You want to.
I still think commissioners ought to get a complimentary...
You do.
Edition of...
Come bring here to this office.
I can decommission.
This is the commissioner's office, this is the commissioner's office, right? Come up here and read it.
You can read last week's on Monday, and then you're not super behind, it's two weeks. Not even a whole week.
This will give you the complimentary, if you don't pay, it's not thirty two dollars for your bill.
Well, the deadline is what, on...
That's all.
Because our paper comes out on... Our paper comes out on...
Six things, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I call an aster, but she... I have a, from one of the resolutions we did before, or something totally different, so I'll just seal it. I thought I might call, twenty five, Jen.
We have to do our Christmas party before Christmas, before December, because once we get to December, we have no, it's hard to find, I felt like, up until like the week before Christmas, that's all we had.
Why don't you, Jim Shelton?
Say, go office and carry the others.
We might be the ones that, we might be the ones that could contact, you know, and then we can reach out to him.
Did they submit it, or...?
I don't know, I don't, I don't know. I'm trying to find, actually, let me... Let's see if that's a little version. The thing, now, the quarrels come, and that's where I feel the same one floating last year, they need to take. They shouldn't all stay contract this week. It's like one of them has a contract. Oh, they should, you know.
Oh, then like I told, it just keeps going, that's...
There's a new state contract for that one, I don't know, maybe, along with me, he was trying to make a new state contract that he, you know, he, is he Bruce Hardesty, so it was, you know, he was, he was there the one that... Can I quote, R I S, R I S? And then, is it I, I R? R I S, I don't know. I'll check, let me see, contract. Thank you. Oh, he's dead, I'm gonna sign it now. Just another one, we did that.
Good gosh.
It's the stuff on the very last one that I stapled.
Bring it either out back, you're not gonna answer that, if things don't work either.
Yeah, it's why it has to go to... Yeah, no, I'm just putting in format, like, with all these staples. Okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
All right, well, I'll do some column, see if I have anything. Yeah. Probably someone on the list, but I don't know where it's at, but... I'll just put this in.
Four dollars, they even collect the B.
What kind of resolution is it for that, because I have some, you know...
Or whatever that one was, might need to be stapled.
I don't know, it's a...
Minute change. Before you sign it, look.
Ooh.
I got some staples, I got all that, baby.
Yeah, I missed that. Yeah, that was great. It works fast, yeah. They put a line here on the end. I'm gonna have to move it that way.
Careful, you're still sticking.
Let's go back to Jake. That's Bob, that name. That's Boozy Drew.
We just managed to get a blood sample, it's okay.
You probably ought to use that. On that spot, anyway.
Remember, one time I pulled in, the last year, take the team over to watch a game, and, oh, this girl stepped out of luck and flip flopped and stepped on a broken glass and broke it down, and we grabbed the birthday kit and we were getting there, working on one thing, I looked up at Rick and I said, "Where's the plastic glove?" He said, "Shut up," and he goes, "Get taken care of." We'd have any plastic gloves, we'd take care of her. I move, we step in, hold for a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Blanket purchase order.
These are both threes.
Jay, those top two, thank you, that's it. Those top two are sheriff, and then the rest of them are ambulance and time general. Don't show, don't sign the sheriff ones, so if you don't want to... I might pull it.
Oh, I can't get it wrong, right? You don't have to do it, actually, I'll do it.
No, I don't rate down.
Sure. Sure, I did half, but I'm just sleeping.
That's a pretty neat little case there.
Those are pretty neat. I just refill that one, you said.
Yeah. Doesn't get all squished in your pocket, or...
I got enough for all my friends, I'll pass it around.
Hey, man, I only need like, maybe a half a stick, you know?
I guess I'll do fly, we had sent a pig. Toby used to always come and just throw them.
Yeah.
I literally, or not literally, but I seriously was just thinking the same thing. Toby used to always...
He does the same thing in church, he like takes a bag to church.
Wow.
And all the kids just like flunk to him, because they know that he has guns.
I just had that in my mind.
Oh, we can't have that.
Candy man.
We, boy, let me put cans on.
Yeah.
There's another gentleman, that they try to meet one another there first, and then the kids go to them, and then moms are like, "No, they already have, no, don't get them anymore."
The other one swabbed away.
At our trick or treat, and I was walking around refilling the people there when they were in low, and I'd walk by some people, I'd do that, open their bag and just dump a whole bowl of candy. Parents were like, "We don't like you."
Yeah, stay awake.
You can sit with the kids, well, in church, let them sit still for you. Are they Kyle's children?
I had, I put my mask on when the kids came to the door, I'd scare them, they dumped their candy, I was like, "Oh, it's bad," but I had candy for the next kid.
You might only ask me once, if all it would take.
I might accept a blanket purchase. Does it cost them, I mean, none, my two hours would look for it.
Being in the middle of the night, and having that bad news, that's gone, he's opening the door, the kids, he's like, "I'm bad."
And they're crazy, yeah.
The more we gradually get in on tax track, the percentage gets a little better.
I thought I did it before.
I think Slade's back, just one of them.
They got everything printed in there, were you? Nothing, I don't doubt it. And they were still waiting for somebody to turn something in from...
I don't know where Carl went.
Oh, he didn't go.
I didn't see him.
Tom, he was doing homework, not Lambert Creek, but let's see, there was one up there.
One, one water chair.
Yeah, what is it, what is it, what is it, what is it? I didn't kind of believe it, there was twenty one people with that effective, but there is... Oh, I can't think of it, anyway, they're always waiting on Kelly, um, playing with that information on that.
Is it Cottonwood Canyon?
No.
No, it's not Cottonwood Canyon. I can't remember.
The shed, the shed, the, the watershed houses, or whatever?
There's a Lambert Creek, and there's...
And the other one?
Yeah, the other one.
That's the other one.
Is that bugs? Is that bugs we're talking about? There's a...
Oh, we can't. Have to get it.
Because I think I might get it, it goes away, it goes...
It extends all the way down through the Drummond Flats, and down through their Gorton Outback County.
No, this one's a little.
Oh, I'm thinking a different one.
This one's a little, it's like, it's like Lambert Creek, but it's another one that's right there through Hewitt and all that, that's just a little bitty district. Just good school. They're waiting for some information from Kelly on that. Well, she may have gotten that.
I can't even think of the other one down there now, you know, such a big battle we have at the conservation over that one, and...
This one, they, they're trying to dissolve this one, and, but until they get that done, we still have to...
Still have to recognize it.
Not whether the year of that one.
I move, we accept the monthly offer report, all for you. All in favor?
Aye.
Safety, sending, sensitive, roll, die, description position. I move, we take no action on it, we don't have anything confirmed, nothing, it's still hanging in limbo, pretty well, that's what you find out from every county, we're not all in the same situation, that it... Two thousand twenty drug policy.
Everyone does the same thing on that.
The same thing, no action, because we can't beat after we find out what they're gonna do with magical marijuana. I move, we take no action on that.
I'll stick it.
On the favor?
Aye.
On both of them?
Both of them. They both tie together. Two thousand twenty payroll due dates.
And the only thing I want to mention on here is there are a couple dates where it's the very next day due to the way it falls, I mean, like, I have to have them on the twenty second. One of them is, the twenty first is on a Friday even, which, again, that doesn't affect you guys, but it will affect Sarah and the sheriff's office. Then there are two that end, no, three that end on the twenty second. Now, we used to have special meetings and just to, I mean, I don't have a problem with it this way, but I know when I have a couple days and I can't get payroll turned into me, so you guys make the decision, do we want to sign it like this, or do we want to have special meetings on those months where it's ending? It seems like next year is really bad, where there, there's one that's a Friday on the twenty first, one that's a Friday on the twenty second, one that's a Thursday on the twenty second, and one that's a Tuesday on the twenty second, but that's Christmas week. So as long as they can get payroll into me, I don't have a problem, but...
I'd back the day up, a day or two, in my opinion.
Well, we can't, I mean, we can't just back the payroll date up, we gotta go through over everything.
When you need it.
Um...
Would that help?
Well, yeah, but then you're having people sign for payroll.
That's right.
And they haven't worked those days.
That's right, you're right.
But I mean, we can go back to having special meetings, to, I mean, and I, and there's you guys, but as long as they turn it into me, I don't have a problem, but I am done chasing people down for payroll, that is ridiculous.
You know, you don't have problems at the playgrounds, under that deal, you have problems anyway, getting that one down.
And I said, I try to celebrate the Monday when it's due, that it's coming up and remind them, I mean, we hand this out, I hand this out multiple times through the year.
Well, she posted that up on the board, board up there.
I said, the districts, I never had a problem with the districts, I never, ever had a problem with the districts.
Well, that's it. Honestly, we have to have special meetings.
The calendar's behind it, if you guys need to look at a calendar, I don't know.
So if they don't get the payroll in, they don't get paid?
That's exactly right.
As long as you guys see me that, okay.
The last time she called me from the payroll board, I said, "They, they don't have it in, they don't get paid, they know, I'm sorry, do your job." The last, last time she called me from the payroll board, I said, they, they don't have it in, they don't get paid, they know, I'm sorry, do the job.
And they had it up here within about an hour.
And they showed up, yeah, they did.
And I mean, and the, and the issue is me having it early, because I have to kick everybody in my office out of Kelly in order to run payroll.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, then that makes them behind, and, and Fridays are crazy with trying to get batch pay on there and everything, so.
I move, we set second date. All right. All in favor, aye. Private property access, anyone projected through.
There's two copies here, it's the same one, but then I can just give more of a copy right back.
Jenny Fisher.
We'll write the motion.
Yeah, then, all in favor? Renew and make changes on six months' bid.
I don't know if you guys, print your copies, there's copies for each one. I did put that one change in there, Jay, that.
Yeah, I, I think we got another one on CMF that, that I'd like to add since I talked to you, that was too less slurry on it.
On?
On the concrete.
Concrete.
That's what we put under that one bridge that forced it out under the.
Spell it for me.
S L U R R Y.
S L U R R Y.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that's right.
Yes. That's on the concrete one, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I had that.
I, um, Jay has me.
That's basically concrete mixed up with no rock in it.
No rock.
And you, we, we put a head, we put a, the end wall sheets down as a wall and shoved it over in that water and then was able to fill that slurry down there to keep that water from going under the existing end wall and wing walls out there, and it worked good.
Yeah.
Marvin gave me a new vendor, I do have that on there, anybody else have any new vendors they want to add?
No, and I've got another deal on that. Oh, you, you put the.
I put on the limestone, I put the five eight pressure run, and I just put it in small, like Woods County.
And the oil, I'd like to put catatonic oil on that.
Oil. Spell it.
Yeah. C A T O, T O N I C.
You talking about on the hot oil?
Yes.
C, spell it again, C?
C A T O T O N I C.
He just made the, he just made the.
Catatonic oil.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll add that. C A T O.
No, it's C A E A, C A P A.
Yeah.
Cat.
Cat.
Catonic. But you said O, so it was A?
A.
So A or O?
C A T A.
A and then tonic, yeah.
Yeah. D O N I. I didn't, I didn't see anything else that I.
On the grater blades, I took off all the high carbon.
Yeah, that's.
And I just have those hardened, real hardened ones, so there's just two sizes there, do we need any other sizes? Six foot and eight foot. No, six inch and eight inch, sorry. Anything else?
Not that I recall.
I'm gonna leave those out there for not quite a month, I mean, today's the eighteenth, and we're gonna close them on, uh, the thirteenth.
I know a few of them, I already said they worked theirs out.
Yeah. I've had several phone calls going, ah, have you guys sent those out? We haven't got them.
I told them, I said, we're, well, we got ours, we just need to get it on your form. I move, we accept that, go out on the bid in six months.
All right.
All in favor, aye.
She's got that.
Well, I, I guess now we gotta instruct her to go out on the bid, we get.
We would, we would.
Make the changes.
Made the, yeah, made the, a motion for the changes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
It was, okay, second, all in favor, aye.
I'm gonna have you guys sign this, this is just the bid sheet that goes out there, that's just stating that it's gonna, we go today through December thirteenth, anywhere.
Right up here on the top or the bottom?
Um, anywhere on there. I'll get those sent out then. I think that will give us, um. We'll open those on the sixteenth then, and that will almost give you guys two full weeks. Well, we'll give you, we'll give you two full weeks then to look at them, and then we won't have to even, um, approve those until the thirtieth. That week before, week in between the Christmas, so.
Any of them, thirteen then, that's another major, I'll circuit that, all in favor?